Anyone else?
My name is David, and in eight years I'll be an alcoholic.
I do?
I'll start drinking in middle school, just at parties. But my parents won't start talking to me about it till high school. And by then, I'll already be in some trouble.
Kids who drink before age fifteen are five times more likely to have alcohol problems when they're adults.
The thing is, my parents won't even see it coming.
So start talking.
Who's next?
Before they start drinking.
My name's Lisa, and in nine years I'll be an alcoholic.
Hi Lisa.
I'll start drinking in eighth grade. And I'll do some things I don't really want to do. Till by the time my parents talk to me about it, alcohol won't be my only problem.
Kids who drink before age fifteen are five times more likely to have alcohol problems when they're adults. So start talking before they start drinking.
My parents...
Sixty-six percent of... ...in Water Town report current alcohol use. That the White County... ...the community... ...of high school and twelve percent of middle school students said their parents discuss how they feel about their children using alcohol. Students that report talking to their parents about their problems are less likely to report ever having used alcohol or other drugs. The average age for... One-third of Water Town High students report driving in a car with someone who has been drinking. Two-thirds of Water Town High students do not report driving in a car with someone who has been drinking.
Hi everyone, evening. These profound videoclips and statistics clearly illustrate what our young people are facing in their lives, and we have reason to be concerned. In the last two weeks...
And in over one thousand cities and towns across America, communities have gathered to find ways to keep their young people safe and healthy. Town meetings across the nation being held to find solutions to underage drinking that can happen when youth have access to alcohol. Welcome to our town meeting. My name is Lori Fiedler. I am the Assistant Director at the Wayside Multi-Service Center here in Water Town, and I am also a proud member of the Water Town Youth Coalition, the sponsor for this town meeting tonight. The Water Town Youth Coalition is a group of concerned members of the Water Town community, including youth, parents, and town and agency representatives who are working together to reduce underage drinking in Water Town. This is a big challenge. To meet this challenge, the Coalition has created a marketing campaign called, "Talk It Up, Lock It Up: Everyone Wins When Kids Don't Drink." Maybe you've seen our banners and posters and flyers around town. The focus of the campaign has been to encourage adults to talk to their kids about not drinking and to keep alcohol out of kids' hands. We have also surveyed middle and high school students to understand what kinds of risks that they are taking. This survey is called the Youth Risky Behavior Survey, and that is where we got the statistics that were presented before by the peer leaders. We are talking about underage drinking tonight, and this is not the easiest topic to discuss. It can be an uncomfortable subject. Everybody has thoughts and feelings about alcohol, and we are hoping tonight for an honest and helpful conversation. We have put together a panel of people who will share their own views, and then we will open up for some discussion. We don't have all the answers, but we do believe that together as a community, we can keep kids safer and healthier, because everyone wins when kids don't drink. So, thank you all for coming. We know how very busy you are. We also know that there were a lot of people who wanted to be here tonight, but were unable to come. So please talk with your friends and neighbors about what went on here this evening. A few housekeeping details. Tonight's meeting is being filmed by the Water Town Community Access Center and also covered by the Water Town TAB. Thank you for the media support. In the bags that you received, there is information for you to read and also a questionnaire with a little itty-bitty pencil. We would like it if you could please fill that out and return it to us before you leave. We have a raffle. We have an iPod Shuffle to give away and other gifts. Signed Museum Membership gift cards that will take place later on in the evening. We also have a bake sale, and proceeds will go to Alcohol-Free Programming for Youth. So...and of course, please turn off your cellphones to silent. I'd like to point out some members of the Water Town community. So if we could get the house lights up, that would be great. Ah, okay. If folks could just stand and give a wave. These people are here to answer any questions you might have. Chief Ed DeVoe. There he is. We have other police representatives that are around the room. Some are in uniforms, some are not. You guys want to give a wave? Okay, thank you. Is Representative Rachel Caprillion here yet? We are expecting some folks. We don't know if they're here yet. Superintendent Steve Hershey. Principal of the high school, Mike Knopfker. Assistant Principals Connie Hyder and Mike McDermott. Chemo Carter, Principal of the high...sorry, middle school. Thank you. Donna Rusikas, Director of Health and Phys Ed for the schools. There she is. Town Councilman Mark Sedaris. Peter Kreiner and Mealy Kim and Joanne Wojcicki, researchers from Brandeis University and helpful folks who compiled data for the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which was a very large task. They are here. Yep. Joyce Chang, Water Town Public Health Nurse. Maria...there she is. Mariana Islam Adu, Prevention Specialist from Regional Center for Healthy Communities. Ernie Thibodeau, Water Town Boys and Girls Club. And it's possible that Katie Joyce from Senator Carey's office is here, but I haven't been able to check in with her. So these folks are here to answer any questions and say comments as they see fit during the course of the evening. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mike Knopfker, Headmaster of Water Town High School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for attending. It's certainly my pleasure to open up Water Town High School to the town meeting. I just want to say just a couple of words. This is a great group of people that support Water Town High students, and I'm sure I could speak for Chemo at the middle school on a day-to-day basis as we look at this very serious issue of underage drinking. We support everyone's efforts in this. On a day-to-day basis, I have Officer James O'Connor with me, our School Resource Officer, my Vice Principals. We have Lori. And we look to, and our students certainly, as I look out in the audience, these are the real leaders. Most of these students last week were here as we did a No Place For Hate and Respect For Differences Week. These are the kids that really make the difference. So I...a round of applause to them. You didn't get introduced, but I... I'm very fortunate to have students and faculty of this caliber. So I welcome everyone tonight. I'm not going to speak too long. I want to let the panelists have their time. I am in the audience, so if you have questions about the high school, et cetera, during the evening, please don't hesitate to ask me. But once again, thank you very much for your support, and enjoy the evening.
Thanks, Mike. Now I'd like to ask Laura Kerman, Co-Chair of the Water Town Youth Coalition, to say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. It's hard to see out there. Thank you for being here tonight. I know it's hard to come out with all the busy schedules everybody has. I have the honor of introducing a few people tonight. Before I do that, I just want to say a little bit that the Talk It Up, Lock It Up campaign we started about a year and a half ago has really, really grown. And I just want to say tonight that we need to continue that. We have seen a decrease as you...I'm sorry, we had the technical difficulties, but you heard a little bit about how there has been a decrease in some of the substance use amongst Water Town youth. But we do feel that it's still at a level that we're concerned about, and as a community, we would like people to be concerned about. And so we need to work together. So I hope that people have signed up to help and that tonight you'll be inspired to do that. And we have lots of ways in which you can help us. We take all and every help that we can get. I have the honor of introducing a few people who have been strongly involved with our efforts. Mark Sedaris, who's our Town Council member here, serves as the Council Liaison to the Youth Coalition. He's a local parent as well as an elected official. He's been invaluable ally to the Coalition's efforts, supporting us in both of his roles in the community. And he's always willing to listen and assist us with our efforts. He also is very willing to speak up publicly about his experiences as a parent and what he believes to be the thing to do, the things that can help our youth grow in a healthy way. And I think he has a presentation for us. If Marky'd like to come up.
Thank you, Laura. It's a pleasure to be here as a representative of the Town Council and a parent. First, I want to present the proclamation to the Water Town Youth Coalition, and it reads, "The Water Town Youth Coalition and Senator Stephen Tolman will be hosting a town meeting for 'Everyone Wins When Kids Don't Drink' on Wednesday, April 5th, at the Water Town High School Auditorium. And whereas, according to statistics, nearly one-third of middle school and over three-quarters of high school students reported that they drink alcohol, strikingly, a quarter of all students who reported drinking stated that they first tried it before age thirteen. And whereas, Water Town is one of hundreds of communities nationwide that will hold the town meeting to discuss and raise awareness about the issue of underage drinking. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the city known as the Town of Water Town proclaims Wednesday, April 5th, as Everyone Wins When Kids Don't Drink Awareness Day, and urge all citizens to participate in this very important Awareness Day. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Water Town on this fifth day of April 2006. Clyde Eljungar, Council President. Laura, please accept this. Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to say that as a parent, I'm going to urge all the parents out there to really think about what the message about the Talk It Up. Talk to your kids. Be aware of what they're doing. That's an important part of this... of being able to solve the problem of some of this underage drinking. So I really want you to listen to what everybody has to say tonight. I know there's probably not a solution to everybody's issues and problems, but I want to urge everyone as a parent to talk to your children and don't be afraid to talk to them. Sometimes they don't like you to meddle in their affairs, but it's very important that you stay involved. And thank you all for coming. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mark. Next, I have the honor of presenting an award. It's our first annual Community Hero Award. Susan Bedrosian has been an active member of the Youth Coalition for many years and has become involved in numerous efforts in the school and in the community, including peer leadership, students against destructive decisions, and other groups. In addition, Susan has been involved in varsity athletics, in basketball, softball, and cheerleading. She is always willing to lend a helping hand and in many, many instances, lead the charge with the many tasks involved in working to improve the health of the community. She has what it takes to do this work. Big changes do not come easily, and she has contributed so much to the effort. Susan, will you come on up? I have the rest I'll say when you're up here. If I can do it without crying. Susan, many of us have watched you grow over the years and we're so proud to see you blossom into such a smart, dynamic, and dedicated human being. The Water Town Youth Coalition has chosen you as the 2006 recipient of the Community Hero Award for your infinite energy and tireless commitment to bettering the lives of your peers in the Water Town community. That's what it says on the plaque. We'd like to send you off with this award as you venture into the beginning stages of adulthood with all its joys, freedom, and responsibilities, and we know that you are destined for more great things in the future. She's one of our panelists, so she's going to talk later. Okay, now for our keynote speaker, who was so kind to agree to do that tonight. To kick off this evening, I'd like to welcome someone who has consistently shown his commitment to substance abuse prevention work. As Senate Chairman of the Joint Committee on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, Senator Tolman has tirelessly and passionately been advocating for increased state funding to support substance abuse prevention and treatment. He has personally intervened in the lives of countless youth, trying to get them the help they need to kick their substance abuse habit. His being here tonight represents his strong support and encouragement for local Coalition's efforts striving to keep our kids safe and healthy. He was raised in Water Town and attended public school here. Please welcome Senator Stephen Tolman.
Well, good evening, everybody. I, uh...good evening, everybody. Now you're talking. It's nice I have a couple of staff members here. I have Katie Langen from my office and Guido Godardi also, who's been working with me on this issue as well. And it's very nice to be here this evening, and congratulations, Susan, on your great award. That's pretty special. I got to tell you, I guess first I should explain that the Committee on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, which you just heard about, that I have the distinct honor of chairing, is a new committee just kind of appointed last year. And the idea behind it was the Speaker of the House and the Senate President were getting together and to try to reorganize the legislative priorities and committees. And one of the things that they recognized is many of the people who suffer with mental health issues or substance abuse issues, their issues were not kind of filtering to the forefront of the agenda of the legislature. And so what they did is they designed a new committee called Mental Health and Substance Abuse. We were finding that many of the issues that we care so deeply about or that we see a loved one in trouble, whether it's mental health or substance abuse, were never making it through the Judiciary Committee, the Criminal Justice Committee, or the various healthcare committees. So that is why we have come up with this committee. And I want to tell you very clearly, this is a committee made up of Democrats and Republicans, and I'm going to tell you, we moved the bill out of the committee... we moved the bill out of the committee with unanimous support to put fifty million dollars into substance abuse. And the reason for that, that's right unanimously, unanimously! And we recognize, we recognize as a committee that substance abuse and mental health is a bipartisan issue. There is no dispute among Democrats or Republicans or even independents. And that's why it's so important. Couple of statistics just to think about. Recently, the state of Washington put sixty-nine million dollars into substance abuse during this budget cycle. And when they did that, they guaranteed the Department of Corrections that this year, not next year, they would save ten million dollars. So an investment in substance abuse support programs is an investment in lives, but it also pays dividends seven to one on the dollar, but you cannot put a dollar figure on the heartache that families suffer. And I'd just like to touch on some of the statistics very quickly, and then I'm going to run by some of the issues that we're working on in the committee. And nationwide, nearly seventy-five hundred teens ages twelve to seventeen try alcohol for the first time each day. Seventy-five hundred a day. Twenty-eight percent of the high school students actually report drinking before the age of thirteen. It's well-known that the children who start drinking before they turn fifteen are four times likely, four times likely to develop alcohol dependence by the time they're twenty-one years old. These consequences are staggering. And seen increased rates of traffic crashes. Think of this, just listen to this. The result of underage drinking nationally cost United States fifty-three billion dollars in social costs. Fifty-three billion dollars in social cost. And are we...let me ask you this. Are we better off investing in, you know, preventing underage drinking? Fifty-three billion dollars. Our state budget and the whole state of Massachusetts is about twenty-five billion dollars. In fact, the consequences also include nineteen billion dollars in traffic crashes and twenty-nine billion dollars in violent crime. But let's go back to Massachusetts, and I'm going to touch very quickly on these. Forty-eight percent of all high school students, as we said by the young adults that presented the statistics here, forty-eight percent of all the students reported current alcohol use. Twenty-seven percent in Massachusetts reported binge drinking in the past month. Over three hundred thousand Massachusetts students, Massachusetts children, drink each year. And underage, listen to this amazingly, underage Massachusetts children consumed fifteen point six percent of alcohol sold in Massachusetts totaling five hundred and sixty-four million dollars. That is outrageous. That's underage. That is underage. And you can do the numbers if you take that fifteen percent and just do another eighty-five percent, the amount of money that's in the alcohol industry. Forty-five percent of Massachusetts sixth graders, think of that. Forty-five percent of the sixth graders reported that alcohol was easy to obtain, with over ten percent stating that they typically got it at home. Forty-six percent of Massachusetts high school students reported, and I think they cited this statistic earlier, using alcohol in the past month also reported doing so while riding in a car. And over a quarter of them reported actually driving after drinking. These are unacceptable statistics, and I could go on and on and on. But Massachusetts, and this is the saddest one, consequently, the consequences to Massachusetts are similar to those seen nationally with an estimated one point four billion dollars in cost to Massachusetts each year. We rank thirteen highest in the nation at a cost of nearly three thousand dollars per child in underage drinking. And the breakdown is very simple. We have to invest to prevent underage drinking because it is unacceptable, the levels that we're seeing. And we can talk about statistics in dollar senses, but you cannot put a price tag... you cannot put a price tag on the heartache of losing a child or seeing a child deteriorate like the young children in the movie, that I'm going to be an alcoholic in nine years or in eight years. We have to take it seriously. And most important, what this town meeting is about is we began a couple of weeks ago at the Seaport Hotel, and I was in Brighton last night. Most importantly, we must talk about this. Not put it under the rug. Not pretend it doesn't exist. I'm going to tell you, the Committee on Mental Health and Substance Abuse has been working on a lot of things. And one of the biggest things we're working on right now is to develop what they call sobriety high schools. Sobriety high schools. And what we find is when we take children with a substance abuse issue and put them into treatment, put them back in their same environment, okay? So they go to treatment, they go back to their same environment. Within two weeks, ninety-two percent of them are back to their old habits. Think of that. And particularly in Massachusetts here, we have the highest rate of heroin in the nation. And let me tell you something, OxyContin is through the roof. And I say that OxyContin is not a gateway to heroin. It is a rocket ship to heroin. And we have to stop the cause. We have to prevent and educate so that it doesn't continue the trend that we have seen, which is through the roof. Through the roof. The statistics are staggering. And so the committee is working on this sobriety high school. And let me tell you, in Minnesota, where I went last July to visit, they had a national conference. Eighty percent, eighty percent of those that graduate and attend graduate sobriety high school, go on to college. And we were at Augsburg College in Minnesota where the conference was held. And they have a separate section of the college where they have sobriety dorms. And I'm going to tell you, I'm very proud to report that in the sobriety section of the dorms, the average GPA was three point four, as opposed to three point one for the regular students. It shows, statistics show everywhere possible that if you're not abusing yourself, you can do better and be more focused in school. And that's what we have to talk about. That's what we have to be more willing to say, you know what? It's okay to be sober. It's okay not to take on drugs. It's okay not to be a follower when they all say, "Come on, let's try this." We need you to say to your friends, "You know what? That may be wonderful for you, but guess what? It's going to lead me down a path that I'm not going to be proud of." And that's what we need to do. We need to be talking about this as moms and dads, as teachers. And I know that I'm limited on time, but I'm going to tell you that at my office, the office of State Senator Stephen Tolman stands ready and willing to help any one of you anytime. And the message from the Bureau, from the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Committee is that our government will not let you down. If you know somebody you love, if you know somebody you care about, and they are in need of help and you can't get it, don't hesitate to call us. We will assist you in every way possible to make sure that we can get you assistance. New Beginnings is a great program in the middle schools. We saw the ads there. I know that Dick Negerian has been very active working with me, a former retired teacher here who was a great mentor of mine. New Beginnings puts the education in the middle schools mostly and does work in the high schools as well. We're working on this sobriety high school. There's going to be one in Western Mass. There's going to be a collaborative in the North Shore, and we're hoping to get one in the Boston area. We also have a concept of a pilot program where we have substance abuse counselors in all high schools. In all high schools. So that if you have children that are in trouble, and that's something that the state should be funding. It should be not, it should not be an unfunded mandate. This is investment in substance abuse that will pay dividends beyond our wildest imaginations. We have the twenty million dollars in a sub-budget, which we hope to move out to put into increased funding so you have a continuum of care. Think of this, folks. In Massachusetts, where we have the highest rate of heroin in the nation, we have a detox system, which is down fifty percent of the beds we had just five years ago, from one thousand to five hundred. That's not so bad. It's unacceptable, but we can improve that, and we're going to improve that. But guess what? Seven to fifteen percent of those that get into detox have access to a secondary program. That means eighty-five percent at best go to detox and have no secondary program. Brings us back to what we do when we have youth residential, go into a treatment program, go back to the same environment. We are losing the war. And we are losing the war because we're not investing properly. But I'm going to tell you right here tonight, not me, not Steve Tolman, but the Committee on Mental Health and Substance Abuse is here to tell you that we are going to reinvest in substance abuse. We are going to make sure that there's a continuum of care so that we can stem the tide of this silent epidemic of substance abuse throughout our youth and adults. And that's our commitment for Massachusetts to all of you, especially in high school, but most importantly, throughout the whole state of Massachusetts. And we have to talk about it, not pretend it doesn't exist, because it's there. We have a special subcommittee on Alcoholism in Youth, chaired by Representative Liz Malia. We have a special subcommittee on alcoholism in youth chaired by Representative Liz Malia. We also are looking at quarry reform. Most of the kids that get involved in this, before they know it, they've got, they're before the judge, they've got a quarry, now it's more difficult to get jobs. Their life is in a turmoil until they get sober. We have also, I've had DA's come to me, district attorneys come to me, and they say they know somebody's got a substance abuse problem, there's no place for them. We need to make sure there are programs for them, and that's what we're doing on this committee. Let me tell you something, folks, we have drug courts. We have all different types of programs, but we don't have enough. And unless you're talking to your legislators, unless you're talking to the police who can work with us, we're not here if you have a substance abuse problem. We're not here to say you're a bad person. We're here to say you have a problem, and we want to help you, and we can help you. And that's what the Bureau of Substance Abuse in the state of Massachusetts does, working with our committee on Mental Health and Substance Abuse. And I want any of you, don't be afraid to write down this number, because if any of you know anybody that's addicted to Oxycontin or heroin or has a serious alcohol problem, there is a very simple 1-800-327-5050. It's a toll-free number, and they can give you assistance. And if you don't get any satisfaction, don't you hesitate to call me at 722-1280. Call my office, our representative Rachel Caprillion, our representative Peter Katusian. We are here for you. We will work with the school department, we will work with the police, and we together, all of us, will stem the tide of substance abuse, most importantly in our youth, but through adulthood. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very, very much for your strong and clear message and for all of your support. That number I think was 1-800-327-5050? Okay. Now I'd like to introduce some panel members if they could come on up and take their seats by the panel. Ann Taggart is from the Northborough-Southborough Home Safety Network. Her community is working to help parents talk with other parents about underage drinking, and she is also the mom of a high school and elementary school age child. Dr. Dan Slater, come on up, folks. Dr. Dan Slater is chief of pediatrics for the Watertown and Somerville offices of Harvard Vanguard Medical Associates. Dr. Slater and his three partners are the physicians for the Watertown Public School System, and he will address the health-related consequences of underage drinking. Officer James O'Connor, Watertown School Resource, Watertown High School School Resource He was born and raised in Watertown. He will address the legal aspects of underage drinking and describe his role in the schools. Our youth panelists tonight are Susan Bedrojian and Dasha Dumorne. Susan is a senior, a youth coalition peer leader and the president of SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions. Dasha is a junior here at Watertown High School and Watertown Youth Coalition Peer Leader. Both are here to speak tonight about what youth are facing in their lives and what they are doing to support each other. So the panelists will present some information, and then our talented peer leaders will also perform some skits that they created. So we'll ask you to please hold your questions and comments until the end, as then we'll be raising the house lights and opening up for some group discussion. So, okay, our first speaker tonight is Ann Taggart.
First, I would like to thank Lori Fiedler for inviting me here tonight. My name is Ann Taggart, and I am a parent from Northborough. I have two children. I have an 11-year-old girl who's in fifth grade and a 15-year-old boy, he's a freshman in high school. I've been a stay-at-home mom for the last seven years, and before that I worked in the mental health field. I've been asked to speak to you tonight about things parents can do to prevent underage drinking. I imagine your community is probably a lot like Northborough, and in Northborough, a lot of kids drink, and a lot of kids think it's cool to do so. Last year, I started thinking about my son and the likelihood that he would be drinking soon, and honestly, it scared me to death. Our community has had its share of tragedies in the recent years due to kids driving drunk. I would think that many of you may have read about the Murphy sisters who died when their car hit a telephone pole last fall in Southborough. They were racing home from a party, and they were drunk. These girls attended my son's high school. They were two beautiful sisters. They were popular, athletic, smart, and they had a wonderful future ahead of them. They died senselessly. I can't imagine how those parents managed to cope on a daily basis. I decided I needed to do something about the issue of underage drinking in our community. So I started the Home Safety Network with a very small group of parents about a year ago. The Home Safety Network is modeled after a nationwide program called Safe Homes. We're a support network for parents who are concerned about teenage drug and alcohol use at home parties. Basically, as members, we agree to supervise our children's parties and do the best we can to ensure that there will be no drugs or alcohol available to the kids at those parties. We have a directory which consists of members' names and addresses and phone numbers, emails, et cetera, so we can contact each other. So if, for example, my son came home and said that he had been invited to a party at the Smith's House, I could look at the directory and find the Smith's number and call them, find out if in fact they were having a party, if they were going to be home, and some of the other details around the party. Really, the whole purpose is to allow parents to connect with each other. We meet regularly, once a month, and we've focused recently on trying to increase our membership and educate parents on, on the issue of underage drinking. We've brought in a couple of speakers, and we've hosted a forum much like this recently in which our community leaders spoke about underage drinking and other risky teenage behaviors. I think the Home Safety Network is effective because it reduces the possibility that kids will have access to drugs and alcohol. The more families that sign on, the less places kids have to go that are unsupervised. The network also gives parents access to other parents so that they can share information or discuss ways, other ways that we can keep our kids safe. Given that, let me, let me offer some practical things that all parents can do. First of all, know where your kids are and who they are with. Kids are 28% less likely to drink alcohol if their parents know where they are and know who they're with. Also, wait up for them until they get home. Kids are 36% less likely to drink if parents know when their kids don't come home on time. Set rules and enforce consequences when those rules are broken. Kids are less likely to drink if parents set clear rules around drugs and alcohol and if parents punish them when they break the rules. If you're the one having the party, supervise it. And that doesn't mean just being home. It means going in every once in a while to see what's going on at the party. I think we need to remember that it's the job of teenagers to try out new behaviors and to see how far they can push the envelope. They're not always going to make good decisions, they're not always going to use the best judgment. It doesn't mean that they're bad kids, it just means that they're teenagers. I also want to comment on parents who do allow alcohol at teenage home parties. I imagine it happens here, because it happens in Northborough quite a bit. I think parents think that drinking is part of growing up or a rite of passage. As I mentioned, in my community in Northborough, it's popular to drink, and parents don't want their kids not to be popular. I think often parents think if they just take away the keys, everything will be fine. Now, I'm sure Officer O'Connor is going to speak about the social host liability law and how hosting an underage party puts you at great risk. But there are other issues as well. Parents who serve underage kids at their home are taking away another parent's right to decide what's appropriate for their child. Kids who might otherwise choose not to drink are faced with a dilemma when adults make the offer. And finally, you're sending kids the message that rules don't apply to them. So I just want to encourage you to connect with other parents. Make the phone call to find out about the party. Get to know parents of your children's friends. Talk with each other about what your kids are up to. And most importantly, talk with your kids about drugs and alcohol and set clear boundaries around your expectations for them. Parents are the best protections kids have against drug and alcohol abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And now we have Dr. Dan Slater.
It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. I participated in this meeting two years ago, and it's great to see the effort continue. Very happy to see all of you in the audience today that are also showing a commitment to addressing this problem of underage drinking in our community. Together, myself and my partners at Harvard Vanguard are the school physicians for the Watertown schools, and we are very proud and pleased to participate along with the schools in combating this problem. I'll restate just a few statistics, not all of the ones, because you've heard several of them already many times, but I'll speak to a few of them again. Across the country, 5,000 youth under the age of 21 die from alcohol-related events that include motor vehicle accidents, unintentional injuries, homicides, and suicides. And alcohol is still the drug that is most often abused by teens, along with many others, but it still leads the list. Still, we've learned from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that 30% of Watertown middle schoolers, not high schoolers, middle schoolers have begun to drink alcohol, and nearly half of 10th and 11th graders report drinking in the past 30 days. Just to clarify that binge drinking, for males equals five drinks in one session, one evening, and for females that constitutes four drinks in one session. I think it's a very frightening statistic, and I think you've already heard it before tonight, that a third of Watertown high school students report driving in a car with someone who has been drinking, and that is a very scary statistic. So in light of this, let me address what the health risks are of underage drinking. I've already alluded to many of them. But foremost is the concern of accidental injury and death. A teenager dies every two hours on the weekend from alcohol-related injuries and accidents in our country.
I hope, have you been able to hear me? Okay. I usually have a fairly loud voice. So foremost is the concern of accidental injury and death. And these involve, as I said, car accidents. There are falls, drownings. Unfortunately, just this winter, we had a youth who in New Hampshire died while snowmobiling on thin ice in Lake Winnipesaukee. It's just one example of many of the different ways that alcohol can play a part in unintentional accidents and deaths. There are other drownings in the summertime, fights, suicides certainly. But, so accidents are one of the most important ways that, that our youths are being injured and killed by alcohol. There's also the risk of acute alcohol poisoning. Alcohol is a respiratory depressant, and as such can result in respiratory failure, coma, and death. And I think it's important to speak to the point of the notion of taking the keys away and therefore everything will be okay, because certainly, if you overdrink at home and, and drink too much, you can die of alcohol poisoning in your very home, and that has happened. This effect is exacerbated when alcohol is combined with various depressants and sedatives. And today, we know that more teens are using prescription medications and pills that are not their own. These include narcotics, Oxycontin and Vicodin, for example, also the benzodiazepines, which include the Valium Placematication, commonly Klonopin, also known as K-Pins, which we've seen in a tragic event in Arlington this year as well. Together with alcohol, these drugs increase dramatically the risk of respiratory failure, coma, and death that can result with alcohol ingestion. We should also speak to the gateway status of alcohol. It is still one of the primary ways that youths are introduced to the drug culture. And initially, the high that they receive from drinking may be sufficient, but over time with the development of tolerance, teenagers are often looking to other drugs, stronger drugs, and potentially more dangerous and lethal drugs as well, to get the same high that they need to relieve perhaps some of the challenges in their lives that they face. There's also the risk of long-term dependence and its complications, although teenagers don't generally face the problems of liver disease and pancreatitis that we see in older adults, knowing what we know about statistics that, that when children start drinking under the age of 15, that they're four times as more likely, or 40% of those youth will have alcohol dependence as an adult. We have to look forward to the medical problems that these youths are going to face in the future, and it's going to come at a significant financial burden to the healthcare system and certainly a toll on themselves and their families. I think very importantly, there is the impaired judgment that comes with intoxication from alcohol. With that impaired judgment, there's an increase in sexual behavior, and with that, the risk of sexually transmitted diseases, including HIV. Certainly, when disinhibited from alcohol, the use of a condom may go by the wayside, and there's that increased risk of STDs along with pregnancy. I also significantly worry about children with inadequately treated mental illnesses such as depression, anxiety disorders, and indeed, attention deficit disorder, who are particular risk of self-medicating with alcohol. It's very important that those, those diseases are recognized in and of themselves so they are adequately treated, and our youths don't turn to alcohol as a way of treating their own problems. Just give a few brief selections of what we're learning from science. There's a growing amount of animal and human study data that suggests early exposure to alcohol may impact the developing brain in alarming and permanent ways. This is up to age 21. Some animal studies, many of these studies have been done in rats. We can't extrapolate completely, but there's actually a lot of good work that's being done that shows rats who are exposed early in development to alcohol had a greater preference for both the odor and the consumption of alcohol later in life. Adolescent rats exposed to alcohol also are more impaired at learning certain motor tasks than their adult counterparts. Then there's human studies, work by Tabor and Brown, who suggest that early exposures to alcohol may also have an impact on cognition, memory, and other aspects of intellectual capacity later in adulthood. And this one got me. There's a study by De Bellis and others who studied, they actually ran MRIs, magnetic resonance imaging, in a group of adolescent alcohol users, and found that a part of their brain, called the hippocampus, was significantly smaller than that of age-matched non-alcohol users. So there is a change in your own anatomy that we see in the light of use of alcohol. The hippocampus is a part of the midbrain that is important in spatial orientation and in memory and in mood, and this area is being made smaller by the use of early alcohol. It's also interesting to note that in patients, older patients with Alzheimer's disease, this is the part, one of the parts of the brain that shows atrophy or decrease in size as well, and probably contributes to why Alzheimer's patients have difficulty finding their way home because of the effects on their memory and their relationship to spatial orientation. There's some other human studies that show levels of sex and growth hormones are impacted by the exposure to alcohol. There's a decrease in girls in estrogen levels, there's a decrease in boys in luteinizing hormone and testosterone levels, and this may indeed impair growth. Research is continuing, supported by the National Institute of Health and other important agencies to address these concerns, and will hopefully over time demonstrate more causality and, and other opportunities for treatments as well. I'd just like to cover a few things that, from my perspective, can indeed be done. Very happy to hear what Senator Tolman had to say and offer, because we know that public policy clearly does work in this area. I bring the issue of the minimum legal drinking age as just by way of an example. Following prohibition in the early 20th century, almost all states adopted a legal drinking age of 21. In the 1970s and the 1980s... In the 1970s and the 1980s, this was lowered in many states, including in Massachusetts. In fact, in Massachusetts, the drinking age was lowered from 21 to 18 in 1973. What followed was a sharp increase of fatal crashes from motor vehicle accidents. There was a sharp increase of deaths, and a study by Farrar in 1976 demonstrated a 39% increase in fatal crashes involving 18 to 20-year-olds at that time. Fortunately, in 1984, the federal government enacted the Uniform Drinking Age Act and mandated a decrease in funds to states who didn't increase their drinking age. Fortunately for all of us, the drinking age was increased to 21, and what followed was a decrease in motor vehicle accidents and fatal crashes involving youths. That's on the national and public policy level. I would like to speak a little bit about what happens at home, because I very strongly believe and support in my practice that parents' behavior strongly impacts teens' attitudes towards alcohol and their behavior. Parents need to consider their behavior and ask important questions of themselves, and I'll just throw some of these questions at you. Do you use drugs and alcohol irresponsibly yourself? Have you provided guidance and clear rules about the use of alcohol to your kids? And do you unintentionally promote drinking in your home in some of the following ways? Do you usually offer alcohol to friends and family who come to visit? Do you make jokes about getting drunk or using drugs? Do you yourself drink and drive? Has your child ever seen you drunk? Are you proud of how much you can drink? And do you support or promote underage drinking at home? If you answer positively to these questions, you may be encouraging your teen to begin a pattern of very dangerous behaviors. So I support a family approach at home where, one, there's a contract for life, that you've spoken to your teenager and made it perfectly clear that any time, day or night, you know that it's safe for them to call you to ask for a ride home if they're in a potentially dangerous situation. It's incredibly important. And the consequences are there won't be any discussion about punishment or the events or what led up to the events at that time, and it can be discussed at a calmer time in another day. Parents must set an example of sobriety at home. It doesn't mean that you can't drink, but you need to drink responsibly, reasonably, and there needs to be an atmosphere of sobriety at home. I certainly support the notion of safe homes that Ann also spoke to, where no party should be without adult supervision at home. There needs to be open communication. And finally, I'll finish, just to speak to some of the community resources. I'm very proud as a pediatrician to participate in the Watertown Youth Coalition, and I ask all of you to turn to your family physicians and pediatricians to make sure that they are addressing at your annual physicals the concepts of substance and alcohol use with your teens. This should be done confidentially, just with the teen alone, and they should know that their conversations are confidential. And during that time, pediatricians, your physicians should be using surveys and questionnaires to really find out if the patient in front of them, if the teen, is at risk of substantial substance abuse. And if so, then the child should be referred on to substance abuse counselor, mental health professionals in the community, school guidance counselors, et cetera. We're very lucky to be in a community where there is such a terrific community activism. And I'd just really wrap up by saying that the Watertown Youth Coalition is doing a great job keeping this important topic in discussion and in front of all of you, and thank you for coming to discuss it.
Thank you, Dan. And now Officer James O'Connor. Yes. Oh, I believe we have some theater.
What's up, Case?
Want to go to the movies?
I don't know, I have a really bad headache.
Come on!
No, I had a rough night last night. I have a really bad hangover.
Please?
No, what movie watching?
Saw II.
I don't know, I really wanted to see that movie. I don't know, let me go check my dad's liquor cabinet and see if there's any alcohol.
Sounds kind of stupid, but...
Aw geez, he locked the cabinet. I don't know what to do.
Well, if your dad cares about you as much as I do, then I'm glad he did it.
I don't know, I guess you're right. Let's go to the movies.
They all set? Thank you. Okay, Officer James O'Connor, please.
Thank you. Good evening, and I, from the police department, the schools, the youth coalition, I would like to also thank you for coming to such an important event. It's probably one of the most important meetings that we do during the school year. I'm here, I have the pleasure to talk about the laws and the consequences of the laws, specifically around underage alcohol use. I just wanted to go over a couple of statistics first before I get into the laws. I don't know if you had a chance to look, it's interesting reading about our Youth Risk Behavior Survey that was done, self-reported by our own students here at the high school and at the middle school, but particularly at the high school concerning access to alcohol. 51.6% of the students reported they obtain alcohol from a sibling or a friend. 48.7% they obtain it from a party. 49% have a friend buy it, and 25.6% get it from their own home, which is concerning a quarter of our kids. It goes on in this, from the house with the parent, with knowledge of the parent, 14% and 11% buy it themselves. Another interesting statistic that I found was 74% of our students believe that their parents know that they drink when they go out on the weekends, and only 10% reported that their parents discussed this issue with them at home. So that's kind of, that's a concerning statistic. And again, that's reported by our own kids. And please, I'm not here tonight, you know, as a representative of the police department to tell you how to parent your own family. I would never do that. In fact, I have a one-year-old at home and I could use all the advice I could get from anyone. Sorry. Can everybody hear me okay? Is that better? Okay. So I'll be looking for advice afterwards. I'll be asking plenty of questions. The first law, there's a couple I want to go over really that pertain to this issue. The first and probably the most important is the social host liability law. This law was enacted in the year 2000, and it was kind of a segue from the contributing to the delinquency of a minor law. That was the old law. Under that law, in order to prosecute or charge somebody with that offense, the police would pretty much have to see an adult or another person hand a bottle of beer or some liquor to a minor in order to bring that to court. Now, what the legislature did in 2000 was they enacted this law, it's called furnishing alcohol to a minor. What that covers is, it covers anyone who knowingly provides a place for under 21 people to possess or consume alcohol. So we don't have to see them anymore, which is great from our standpoint, we don't have to see them actually handed to them. It's a much easier law to work with as far as charging people with it. It carries a one-year house of correction penalty along with a $2,000 fine, up to a year or a $2,000 fine. If you read the law specifically in the law, it states that the reason why the legislature enacted this law was to deal specifically with irresponsible parent or adult behavior. So the state feels very strongly about that. And the police department's stance on it is, we take it very seriously, especially this time of year. It's a great time for this meeting. As we approach prom season and graduation time, some parents do provide a place for kids to drink and celebrate. Celebration is great, but the alcohol is not great at all. And the police department takes it very serious. We will prosecute people who do violate this statute. And just as an example, I think it was about three years ago, there was a family in Peabody after graduation. They provided their home for underage people. And their philosophy was, well, the kids are going to go out and drink anyways, why not we have it at our house? Let them drink, we can control it, we'll take the keys away, we won't let them leave. What happens is a kid leaves, they get in an accident, there was some injury as a result of the accident. Now, the parents probably never, they were probably trying to rationalize and do the right thing. They never probably imagined their wildest dreams of being on the, you know, 11 o'clock news the next night facing criminal charges for providing a place for kids to drink. That's what happened. That's what can happen, making those decisions. Along with the criminal problems is the huge, huge civil liability that would come into play. The police don't deal with civil law, will deal with the criminal aspect with the district attorney's office, but the civil law is, you know, someone gets hurt in an accident, you have the potential to lose your house, you know, your savings, all your assets. It really, it really can get ugly. And that's our stance is from the police department, that we take it very seriously, and if we investigate a case, you know, you will be prosecuted. It also covers when you're away, if your child hosts a party at their house, they are also responsible, because they are knowingly providing a place for others to drink. So it not only deals with the adults, it also covers the under 21 person hosting a party that you might not be aware of. You will not be held criminally responsible, but certainly civil penalties could come in because you own the home. So it covers adults and kids, it kind of, it gets everybody there, which is good. However, if there is an exception to that law, you are certainly able, in your own home, specifically the law says in your own home, parents and grandparents are allowed to provide alcohol to their kids. Now, once a week, I go into the law program, which is part of the history curriculum, and we go over issues about underage alcohol, drugs, driving. In fact, tomorrow, we have a class, Susan's in my class tomorrow. And I tell that to the kids, and I say, listen, you know, don't go home and tell your parents, Officer O'Connor said, let's, you know, rip into a 30-pack because the law allows that to happen. No, that would certainly be a DSS issue at that point. But the law, you know, in my interpretation, is the law recognizes different cultures. Some cultures, it's acceptable to, you know, provide a glass of wine at dinner for your kid. I think that's the, my interpretation of law anyway. So parents and grandparents, you can do it in your own home. Aunts, uncles, cousins in a different home, they violate this statute. Just real quick, another one is when students, not students, underage people are transporting alcohol. That is an arrestable offense. It carries a 90-day license suspension, that's mandatory if they're prosecuted for that. And it also has a house of correction penalty involved. We also have the statute that covers anyone who alters a license, used, sold, distributed a fake ID. That's, they go to a liquor store, they use a fake ID, that's certainly an arrestable offense. That's something that we would look into as prosecuting with the DA's office. And just as an example, I was reading up last night, and how creative under 21 people can be. 1985, there was a case, Commonwealth versus Jones. And what happened in that case was a minor went into a liquor store, used a fake ID, the police ended up coming down to kind of, just to make a long story short. What they found out was the kid used, he used an address of a vacant parking lot on the license. That's how creative they can be, you know. He was then prosecuted and was upheld in court. And that was because he altered his license. Altering a license is also a felony under Massachusetts law, so it is serious. I don't, and again, I don't mean to scare anyone with the laws, this is just, you know, what the police do, you know, we deal with criminal laws. Some of our other policies, now that I am in the school, I've been here four years, Officer Lloyd Burke is here, he's at the middle school, he's in uniform, so he's a guy with no hair on his head. And I tell the freshman kids that when they come in, we have an orientation with them. I do the same job as Lloyd Burke, except I'm a little bit shorter and I have more What we do is, if we have an incident involving underage alcohol or drug use and we decide to not prosecute, that information is not queried anymore, and that is always shared with the school. And it's the police department's, you know, philosophy that the schools and the police work together. We're very fortunate in Watertown, we have a wonderful relationship with the schools. There are other communities where the police aren't even allowed in the school until there's a problem. So we're very fortunate. We do a lot of information sharing, we try to prevent and be proactive as far as education. Just this last Saturday, we filmed a mock crash as a result of an alcohol-related incident before that Susan was involved, Casey was involved. We did it through the SAD program. Donna Resikas is here, she's the chairperson. Cable was very nice enough to film it, we had fire department volunteers and police. It was very realistic, we went, that's some of the education piece that we do. We do recognize also that it's a very tough issue as teenagers. Three years ago, my mother was the principal at the middle school, she sat on the panel next to me, and she could tell you story upon story. We've all had issues dealing with underage alcohol. We recognize here at the school and the police about peer pressures involved, we know that that's very serious. And just as an example of that, three years ago, about five hours before the prom, I got an anonymous call from a parent who, I had about a 10-minute conversation, and it was a mother, and she said, you know, I've been agonizing over this information for three weeks, and I think it's really something, I can't sleep at night anymore, I think you should know about this. The senior class rented a home in Lee, Massachusetts, and at the home was, you know, the tub was filled with alcohol. But we were very, very fortunate that this person anonymously gave the information to the right people to put a stop to it. As a result, we called the authorities out there, we spoke to the kids, and we squashed the problem. But if you think about it, you know, the prom probably gets off over at midnight, just driving out to Lee, Massachusetts at midnight, you know, an experienced driver's going to have a problem. Imagine, you know, a caravan of underage kids with alcohol involved, they get out there. So I don't know if their parents here tonight, and I said it last time, they probably prevented something very serious from happening. And my point is, please, don't hesitate to call. You can call anonymously, you can, I'm here Monday through Friday during normal business hours. The police department provides me with a pager and a cellphone, they can track me down 24 hours a day. Sometimes it's a good thing, sometimes it's a bad thing. Call the station if you need me, they'll get me an emergency. Lloyd Burke is the same, he has a cellphone. If you need us, we'll be there, doesn't, whatever time of night it is. Another issue is when parents go away and kids stay with a family member or friends. If you call the police station and let us know you're going away, we will check your house three times a day, A, to make sure no one's broken into it, and B, to make sure there's no illegal activities going on. We won't go in your house, we check the outside of the house, we check the exterior. That's a service that the police department provides to the community. It's something that you should take advantage of if you go away, if you have any concerns, just call. Not always will something result in a criminal, in a criminal problem. Officers have discretion. Our main objective in dealing with any alcohol incident, whether it's an adult or whether it's a juvenile, is the safety of that person involved. To get them to a place where they're going to be safe, where they're going to wake up the next morning, and then we'll deal with the problem when they sober up. Our objective is not to go out and lock up every high school person with alcohol. Sometimes it happens, sometimes that's what we have to do to keep somebody safe, but that's not our objective all the time. One other issue, and I'll be happy to handle any questions, I don't want to bore you, those are most of the laws that really pertain to parents. One of the, one of the issues is our senior class spring break trip. And it's really not talked about a lot. What, in the years past, all the kids get together, they go to Montreal. It's, that's very concerning to the school, to us as a police department, and probably to most of the parents. It's not by any means a school-sponsored trip, a town-sponsored trip, the kids go up there and, you know, they're probably going to be upset that I say this, they go up there unsupervised. There's no big secret what they're doing up there. The drinking age is 18, for those of you who don't know. So we have our 17, 18-year-olds up there, they're consuming alcohol, some for the first time, some for not, they're binge drinking, they're getting out of control. We've had cases before where our kids, our own Watertown kids have wound up in very serious criminal problems, they've been victims of crime. There was a case with the Royal Canadian Mount, the police came down to Watertown to conduct an investigation. Bad things happen up there. And please, don't think for a minute that there are people in Montreal, in these places, and we saw the case in Aruba, that was very unfortunate. There are people waiting to prey on our high school kids. They know when spring break is, they know the kids are going to be up there abusing alcohol, they know they're going to be impaired, they know their decision-making isn't going to be good. They're going to prey and pounce, and unfortunately, they're going to take advantage of our kids. So please, if you, just reconsider the trip, because a lot of things can happen when you have alcohol and drugs involved and people that are under 21 and experiencing things, you know, for the first couple of times. Again, I'm happy to take questions after the panel discussion, I'm happy to take them in confidence, you can get me always at Watertown High School. You can get me always at Watertown High School. 926-7799 is my office number. You can get me at the police station during business hours, 972-6500. If it's at night or in the weekends, I don't care what time it is, if it's an emergency call and ask for me, they'll call me at home, they'll page me and we'll deal with whatever situation we have to. I just want to take a quick opportunity to congratulate Susan on that great award. She really deserves it. I've known Susan, she's been a kid, I watched her grow up. Since she's been at Watertown High, she's been on the high honor roll, an honor roll every single semester. She's going to Bridgewater State College. She's gonna, she will, you're going to see her in a few years, probably sitting up here in my position because she's dying to be a police officer. She's going to be a community leader. She really is a leader in the high school and it's an honor to sit up here with her tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And now Suzie and Dasha, say a few words.
Hello.
Hello.
This is cooler. Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
All right. My name is Susan Madgeorgian and I'm a member of the Watertown Youth Coalition and SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions. I'm here to urge parents and youth to communicate about alcohol, drugs, and any other issues that can lead youth to destructive decisions in isolation. The peer leaders have focused their attention on the root causes of the alcohol and drug use and have worked to find solutions to excessive stress. Accepting others within our richly diverse community was one priority. Another was to enrich youths' lives with alcohol and drug-free opportunities. And last but not least, to open up communication with adults about this subject. In Watertown, 53% of middle school and 42% of high school youth reported talking to their parents about their problems. While this is a positive, it still only represents about half of the youth in each school. The motivation to change comes with the fact that students who reported talking with their parents were less likely to report ever having tried alcohol and other drugs. Feeling sad or hopeless, having serious thoughts of suicide, and actually attempting suicide. I offer this solution. Talk to your kids about the dangers of underage drinking and drug use and include positive ideas and activities they can involve themselves in. Listen to their needs and wants and work to help them achieve these things. Remind you that there are many adults they can trust to advocate for them. Help them identify the adults in their lives that can help them achieve their goals as well as deal with the issues they face. The SAD chapter of Watertown High School meets regularly almost once a week to plan a project that involves making a video about drinking underage and the consequences it involves. This project will be completed this spring and will be presented in the form of an assembly to the student of the Watertown High School. SAD students members also participate in a training for drinking and driving prevention. This program involves a one full day of training of eight Watertown High School students who learn how to put on a school assembly with important facts, activities, a video presentation, and a special guest speaker. This event will take place on Tuesday, May 16th during school for the junior class. Regularly, students of SAD keep a bulletin board full of information depending on the theme of the month. For example, dating violence, drinking and driving, and underage drinking, and also seatbelt safety. Our SAD group is coached by Ms. Resikas, Health Coordinator, and Mr. Cook, English Coordinator. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Dasha Demornay. I'm a junior here at Watertown High and I'm also a member of the Watertown Youth Coalition. I've worked with the youth members for the past two years to help raise awareness about the issue of underage drinking and drug use. This year, we had a week of diversity at the high school to help all students share the other cultures represented in Watertown. The idea was to break down barriers and reduce stress, which in turn can prevent early use of drugs and alcohol. The youth members of the Coalition have spent time learning how to present their ideas to adults and mixed youth audiences. The fact is, we often don't listen or understand each other. I encourage you to take the lead, to take the lead in discussions with your parents or other adults that can support you. Adults that have had a hard time approaching youth can learn from us the best way to talk about issues and ideas. We can have a role in causing, causing communication, informing adults, and ask for what you need. Youth need adults to be involved in their lives and we also need help with difficult decisions. We also need adults to listen to what makes us sad and depressed. Youth need adults to make sure we are associating with positive people and that we are not aware of the, that we are aware of the dangers in life. Us youth need honesty, not sheltering from information, and we need to be informed. We need to be shown by example and please do not leave alcohol available for us to use. Peer leadership in the Watertown Youth Coalition also support the Saturday Night Live program at the Watertown Boys and Girls Club, a great recreational program offered as an alcohol-free alternative. I also encourage high school students to be a peer leader, member of the Watertown Youth Coalition, and add your positive ideas to this program. Thanks.
Thank you, Dasha. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We'd like to now open up the room for discussion. If we could have house lights up, that would be wonderful. Please keep your remarks as brief as possible so that everybody has a chance to share, if you'd like to. If you raise your hand, somebody will run to you with a microphone. Maybe some of the things to think about, we'd like to know what your reactions are to this information and what are some of the challenges to raising alcohol-free kids? Any ideas about solutions? There are a lot of experts in this room. Everybody's an expert on their families and their kids. Do you have ways that parents can connect with each other? And what youth in the audience, any youth have to say to adults or other youth here tonight? So last, two years ago, we had a rousing conversation and we know it's a little after 8 o'clock, but if people have burning questions, we'd really love to address them. There's one.
Hi. My name is Josh Lee. I'm 15 years using acupuncture. I don't think I need it. But I love what you guys are saying. It's really important to have communication, but all the communication I was hearing about is talking down, not being honest about what we have done in our generation, about our real-life experiences and being honest about things that we've done. Not, you know, about all the war stories, but I think if we want our kids to have an open dialogue with us, we can't just say no. We can't just talk down. We have to be a little honest with them and have the ability for them to keep coming to us. Because once we shut them off, and I've seen so many kids, professionally and personally, friends, kids who all of a sudden, hanging out, it comes along, kids. You'll see it. You'll know who the wrong kids are. And your kids are starting to know that, and you need to have the conversation about what that, what those behaviors are, what's going to happen. We know it. We've seen it. We've seen people, we've seen, we know people either died or we know alcohol. We've seen, we've seen a lot of things. And if we don't talk honestly, someone, and close the dialogue, can just say no, we're going to lose some of our kids. Thank you.
Does anyone want to address that or? Thank you, Josh. Oh, there's, oh.
Hi. My name is Sandy Burke and I'm a senior at Watertown High School. I think that when I hear things like parents talking to their children, it is a good thing. And I would like to agree with this man here saying that talking down is not always the best way because it, it also makes you want to do it. It makes you want to take it because it's disobeying and it's being rebellious. So it is a good idea. Make sure you have an open dialogue with your children because that is the best way, the best way to prevent them from making wrong decisions. And I have a message to any youth in here. I'm sure that there aren't very many of us in here, because we're at the meeting, who drink or abuse any sort of substance. But I might say, I'm a senior and I've gotten through high school without being exposed to any of this such thing and I have a blast when I hang out. It's not something you need to have fun. And I would also encourage you, if you choose not to drink, not to abuse substances, that you encourage younger children. Because I have come here from another country and, and I've realized that when I came to the middle school, at the middle school level, there's a lot of confusion about what is right and what is good and how you can have fun and that you, is the popular thing to misuse substances. So I would encourage you to start talking to a younger generation. People may think that because they're young, they don't drink yet or they don't get substances, but coming from another place and coming into Watertown and finding this, this is very alarming, it's interesting for me to hear, but at the same time horrifying. So start talking to the younger generation, especially middle school kids, because they're starting to grow up and they're starting to get confused.
Thank you, Sandra.
I just wanted to respond to both of those comments. I think they're both, both were excellent comments and I appreciate very much what was said. And I agree that, that the dialogue needs to be open and back and forth and really do encourage all of you, all of us, parents, to ask open-ended questions, talk at a time where your kids don't feel threatened. One good example of that is driving in the car, particularly at night when they don't have to look at you, but they're sitting next to you. And can be a good opportunity to ask some open-ended questions and teens may feel a little bit more comfortable to respond. So that's one suggestion. I also just, just about the talking down, and one thing, as a pediatrician, I would say that some, when I take a history of a teen, I do try to ask my questions very open-endedly and non-judgmentally to find out what the teens are experiencing, what they're exposed to and what they're doing. But I also feel that sometimes it's a very important part of my job to say, I think there's a problem. You know, I'm hearing what you have to say and I think you have a problem. And, you know, I don't know if that constitutes talking down, but I think sometimes hearing it from somebody else, another adult, hopefully somebody else they trust, but from somebody that's not their parent. And hopefully it makes an impression that their behaviors are a problem and that it's time to start thinking at least, or contemplating other ways of behaving, another way to do things.
Thanks, Ian.
Hi. I have an 11th grader and also a 7th grader and I was wondering if the high school students would be interested in bringing their assembly actually to the middle school so that it would be more like peer information versus parents talking down.
Well, last year, we had, last year, a couple of the peer leaders visited the middle school and we put on a mini skit for the middle schoolers and showed them like consequences that happened at an alcohol party. And I guess we could try and do that again.
I'm Kimo Carter. I'm the principal of the middle school and we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's John Strauss and I'm actually on the Board of Health here at Watertown. And I just really would like to applaud everybody for this evening and for the work you're doing. And certainly, if there's something that we can do in terms of putting on the Board of Health, please come to us and let us know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I was just wondering on the topic of not talking down to your kids, how much of your past should you really share with them? I mean, how much detail would you get in to talking to your kids about that?
I don't know that any one of us are experts in that answer because I think it's a very personal and very difficult question. And I think each of us has to find what feels right for yourself in terms of sharing parts of your past. One of my comments before was that I think glorifying your experiences of alcohol is a potential problem. So I think the message would need to be along the lines of, I may have made some mistakes or these are the things that I did and these are the reasons why I think it wouldn't be healthy or good for you. And I hope that you can learn from some of my mistakes. You know, I think the, the difficulty comes in when you really had an excellent time doing those things. And so again, I think it gets down to becoming a very, very personal, difficult decision and you have to know your child, you have to know yourself. And I think that kids, I think your children, all of our children can learn from our experiences and from our mistakes, but it's hard to give very specific advice on it. I think it's a very personal decision.
I found it really helpful that when we actually, my mother and I watched this program about like the alcohol abuse and all that. And the way like she got the idea of opening up to me was by seeing what the parents on the program said. And she basically, we just sat there and talked about what they, the kids talked about and how they felt. And then she just started telling me experiences and that helps.
And also too, just like kids don't really need to hear private stuff about, you know, you can talk to a child about the past experiences you've had in relationships without getting into some oversharing. I think that there might be a way to frame the conversation so they don't get too much information. There should be a boundary there. I see a hand. Couple, oh, yes. Yep. Thanks.
Good evening. Great program.
That's a question for Officer O'Connor. Does the Watertown Police Department have an educational program for the local liquor stores and restaurants? And if so, could you just perhaps touch on a little and perhaps one of their members as a representative could be on this coalition? Just your thoughts.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And we'll certainly get together with Laurie and Laura and Stephanie and make that happen. Captain Rock is here. Sergeant Log could probably best answer that. They deal with, Sergeant Log specifically deals with a lot of the licensing issues. I know that they have to, bartenders and probably restaurant owners have to go through a tips program, which in that program, they, they train to properly, to probably recognize signs of over-serving and things along those lines. But Captain or Sergeant, if you have anything to add?
Sure. At Watertown, just the fact of the recipe is very impressive. Liquor stores, packer stores, what I want to own. And what we do is we make a condition of their license. You have to hold that license. You have to, all your employees, anybody who comes and contact and serve alcohol to the public, they have to go through some kind of educational awareness training, whether it's a tips program or some kind of restaurant program. And basically, that's geared to recognizing the signs of if you're over-serving someone, that they recognize that and stop it. But that doesn't deal with that because you're dealing with underage youths. But when it comes to serving minors, there are very strict rules and regulations at the licenses that you're taking. And if you, if a package store owner or restaurant owner, they're serving underage youths, then we will bring them before the licensing board. They can end up having your license closed down for three or four days, whatever the penalty is. They can have money fines. So the police department does strictly force out, do on occasions, do stings, where we will take a, the squads with juvenile that we're working with, say this juvenile's 20 years old, and we will go with the juvenile, we will send them into the package stores and see, will the package store check to see what they're asking for their license? Will they, of course, they have, they're supposed to have everybody that they think is under 30 years old. And if they get in there, they end up purchasing a bottle of wine, two beers, we'll send them in and say, just go in there and try to buy two beers, or just go in there and buy one bottle of wine and they don't expect that. And if they sell it, then we'll take it before the licensing board. And it's a constant educational aspect that we do all the time at all the restaurant and the package stores.
Thank you. We have time for just a few more comments. Thanks, Laura.
see, will the package store check to see what they're asking for their license? Will they, of course, they have to, they're supposed to pad everybody that they think is under thirty years old, and if they get in there, they end up purchasing a bottle of wine, or two beers, we'll send them in and say, "Just go in there and try to buy two beers," or just go in there and buy one bottle of wine, and they don't expect that, and if they sell it, then we'll take it before the licensing board. And it's a constant educational aspect that we do all the time, all the restaurant and the package stores.
Thank you. We have time for just a few more comments. Thanks, Laura.
I want to add to that, in terms of our marketing campaign, if I could, you'll see some liquor stores listed on the back in the thank you section on your program, and that is because they have been willing to post our posters and flyers, and they're on board, and we're looking to expand on that. One thing we're going to do this spring, I think that you might have, I'm not sure if you missed this, but one of the statistics was about where kids get alcohol, and one of the top places is from older siblings and older friends that are legally able to purchase it, so there's no law being broken in the liquor store, but they then turn around and provide it to minors, and that's a hard target group to get, and that's our next phase of this campaign, and you'll be seeing, what we're looking to do is get some placards and things in the liquor stores, and where the point of purchase, that remind them of the penalties and the consequences, because that's what's been proven to work, basically. And there'll be some other things, an interactive website and some other things going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Maybe time for one more? Any burning comment? There's a hand up.
Hi, hi, can you hear? My name's Kate Fitzgerald, and I moved to Watertown a year ago with my husband, and I've taught high school in another district, excuse me, for four years, and I think it's really great what you're doing tonight, and we didn't do this in the school system in which I work, we don't do this or talk about this, so this is a great, I think it's a great thing to recognize that this is happening, and I guess a couple things, since I, you know, when you're with the kids every day, you know, get to know your teachers, because the teachers know everything, I mean, we really find out what's going on, I mean, you know, you don't, we're not going to be detectives, but you hear kids talking, and it's just good to develop the relationship with the teachers. And also, there was a point made about the two girls in Southborough who were killed, and also the case right now with Natalie Holloway. I think using the media to talk to your kids is a good, just an idea that I had, because it's something, I mean, obviously, we can tell them, "Look what happens," and a lot of kids, it'll go in one ear and out the other, but, you know, if you sit down and talk about the article with them about the two girls that died, I mean, that's something that really hits close to home. Those girls were popular and athletic and smart, and probably girls that, you know, no one thought that would happen to. And also, with the school trips, as a teacher, I always hear the kids begging to go on school trips, and I was in high school ten years ago, and I begged my mother to go, and she wouldn't let me go, and, I mean, it is, it's, you go down, a lot of the kids go to islands and things, and they go, and they get drunk, and, you know, bad things happen, and they don't know what happened to Natalie Holloway, but she was drinking from three in the afternoon on, and it just sets up something, and I think finally also, like MTV and all these, you know, these songs on the radio, they're so embarrassing, I mean, I'm embarrassed listening with my father, who's in his fifties, but they provide good, I think, topic to discuss, you know, they talk about sex and drugs and drinking, and this is like what kids are singing, you know, and it's just, I think it also provides like a good, it's uncomfortable, and I don't have a kid yet, thank God, so, I mean, I applaud you for coming, but, you know, it's something to use, so it's just an idea, so thanks.
And welcome to Watertown. Mike, oh, Mike's got it, Mike? Mike needs a mic.
I can't not say one thing before the night is over. Thank you very much, everyone who was here. The open communication piece, I think you saw tonight with Officer O'Connor speaking, with Dasha and Susan and all the kids here. I think that's what makes Watertown as a whole, and the high school and the middle school, unique, is I think we have that sense of kids that are, will go up and talk to staff, will talk to Officer O'Connor. We're very open about this problem, we don't hide behind it. I do assemblies, and I talk very seriously about drug and alcohol abuse at our events, and I think that's one of the key things that helps us, and as we see, as our surveys, it's dropping. It's not where we want it, but I think you have to be open and honest about it, and you have to stand up at a classroom and say, "You can't do it." You have to stand up at assemblies and just say, "We don't tolerate that," and I think that's, that's a great place, and I applaud the people here tonight, I thank them very much, and I thank you, and I didn't mean to den it that way, I just wanted to add my two cents, so thank you.
One more very brief comment from Joanne.
Hi, I'm Joanne Cochran, one of the co-chairs of the Coalition. I just wanted to say that there is one aspect of talking with your kids about alcohol that people feel very uncomfortable talking about it, and that's why do people drink? And they drink because the alcohol makes them feel good, it makes them feel silly and happy, and they have fun, until they drink too much, and until problems happen. So I think talking with the kids about the early effects of alcohol, which is silliness and fun and having a good time, is really important, because that's what grabs them from their peers. "Well, have a good time, it'll be fun." So talking about the long-range effects, and what happens when you have two or three versus just one, and I'm not sending a message that they should have any, but I think talking with the kids, and Dan talked about it some, the need to have a better high, a more of a high, a faster high, that moves them to marijuana and moves them from marijuana to other drugs. We didn't talk about marijuana at all here tonight, that is an issue in the town with the kids. There's some statistics and data in the back of the lobby, if people want to look at that. But thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. There's a lot of very helpful information in the blue bags that you received, so please share that and read that. There's also a questionnaire in there, we're very curious to get your feedback, so if you could take some time before you leave to fill that out. And before we do the raffle...
Laurie, can I just, I just want to say, I had a note, I just wanted to make it, it's very, it's an obvious point that I forgot to say. Twenty-one means twenty-one. It's not discretionary, it's certainly absolute. Twenty-one means twenty-one, that's the law, that's the bottom line when it comes down to it. And I think the police, the schools, the community, and all our other disciplines are involved tonight, really firmly believe that if you talk to your kids about underage drinking and the consequences associated with it, and you really concentrate on locking it up and limiting stuff in your house, I think together that we can all make these statistics decrease even more, so when we have the next meeting, it looks even better. That's the only thing I just wanted to point out. Thanks.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, before we do the raffle, I'd like to thank Senator Tolman, Mark Sedaris, our panelists, and of course, our beloved peer leaders, who put a lot of time and effort into this evening, willingly and for free, they, everybody volunteered. We'd also like to thank the high school for hosting the event, and a very special thank you to Debbie Munger. Where's Debbie? Debbie and her crew from the Grace Chapel in Lexington. We could not have done this evening without you. They have donated their time, money, and fattening ingredients to a bake sale that will support services for kids, so please buy some sugar. And now, one last thing, if you're inspired by our efforts, we need a lot of help. Like Mike Knopfker said, this is a wonderful, caring community, we do a lot of things together, and that's why things are good here. And so, we have sign-up sheets out there, if you have a special expertise in fundraising or marketing or reaching out to other parents, we need you. So, let's do a raffle. Okay. First, for a bath and bodywork something, looks like a gift card. Is she here? This is a museum of science membership.
You're graduating senior.
Leah Beeland.
Are they all friends? Okay. An old Navy gift card. Congratulations. Leah? Okay, this next is a gift card to Best Buy.
Sorry if I can't, if I can't say your last name, Jennifer Coin, or Khan, whatever. Sorry.
Now for the iPod. So everyone, thank you so much for coming, we really need your help, we know that everybody wins when kids don't drink, so talk it up, lock it up, and thank you so much for coming tonight.